What's your sound?
Here.
Pickla?
Yes.
Ray?
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of the agenda. Any changes? Uh, we do have one addition this evening. We added five, A, we're gonna add three. It'll be discussion, uh, gable and go occupancy and big G's alcohol license.
Any other change?
None.
I know you're a people.
I can call the room.
Westing?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Tex?
Yes.
Dexter?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then pre-presentation of petitions and other communications. A, public hearing for proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs on boomwater work, dam, stone, purchase, and delivery project. Any written comments? Any public comments? Now that this public hearing is closed. Okay, B's, discuss use of city facilities for political purposes. Greg, what?
Uh, this has just been put on, it was on there, but I couldn't make the last council meeting. Uh, I had a couple of questions regarding, we are Iowa, so we do have a lot of candidates to try to appear in either, and the question was asked on, what's the policy for building events on city property? And my response was, I don't know, I'll check with Luke. The response was, is that, uh, our policy at this time has been, as long as they pay the rental fees for the city, you know, parks, city auditorium, uh, whatever, then they can use it and provide full services. And the most recent examples have been the elaborate meeting room on the top floor. Candidates had come through and posted different things there. President's visit in the park at Irwin. Governor Romney's in the, or in West Ames, that was from county, they provided fire service over there. So it was really just a back end, and regardless of whatever political affiliation they are, as long as they pay the rental fees for the city and they use it like anybody else, the Baltimore's, it's perfectly fine. That's all I got.
Okay. Okay, C, discuss short-term use of city hall auditorium.
No, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, number four, report of standing committees, policy administration, employer relations committee, check.
My report?
Transportation committee, Stephen. Utility committee, Gary.
Yes. Okay, uh, I've got several things to bring up tonight. Uh, first off, item one, Kelly Bennett was unable to attend, uh, she has had, she's been to the utility committee in regards to an issue with her sump line and some related issues inside her house. And the utility committee denied, um, any reimbursement for it, but we did allow for a connection from her sump line onto a collector line outside. And the city has done that, I believe that was done last week. So, uh, but she was unable to attend tonight because of a, uh, death in the family, and she had to move town. So she wants to come back, uh, she can't be at the next meeting, but the second meeting in December, she'd like to get scheduled back in. She basically wants to come and ask the whole council for, uh, some assistance. We did turn her down to utility committee, so I told her that's her option, is to come back. But along that same line, um, since it's fresh in, in public works mind, I think it's important that you tell what you found out there, uh, at Mrs. House and what went on. I think it's important.
Yes, um, like Gary said, we rehooked her sub pump up last week to the sub pump, our collector line. We talked to Joel Hall, which is the plumber that did her service line, whole plumbing, and after some investigating, we figured out, she blamed it on our collector line being plugged. But we got in and tried to clean it with our jet truck, and every time we'd go a little ways and we'd hit something, we couldn't go any further. Okay, so we just assumed it was our, our collector line plug. After some investigating, we went and tried to clear that whole line, the whole collector line, and every time we hit something, we dug it up. Well, the, the collector line that we put in it was a perforated tile, and it's not straight, it's sort of curved and, and windy a little bit, so it's not perfectly straight. We weren't hitting a clog, we were hitting the actual pipe that had a kink in it, so our jet couldn't go any further, because the jet is long, and it takes, you know, you can't just take sharp corners on it. So after some investigating, we talked to the plumber, the, her, uh, sub pump line from her service line blew apart under her driveway. So it separated there, her sub pump line, her collector line, and into our collector, her service line and into our collector line was all full of rock and mud, because when it comes on, it gets force, it has force and it blows water, rock, and dirt into it. Long story short, her pipe, pipe came apart and under her driveway, whether it was busted, not put together, no glue or something, which plugged the rest of her service line in, in our collector line. We just assumed that we couldn't get the jet through, the collector line was plugged. Where our collector line was totally clean, so once I think we explain that to her, it'll help the whole situation.
So it was blowout of her line?
Correct, it shoved all the stuff down her service line and into the beginning of our collector line, our tile. Because the rest of it was clean.
Is that the reason why it's all like this?
It's not the best pipe for the situation. It should be a hard PVC pipe with, with taps, and their lines put in it. For some reason, way back when, when they did that development, they used, they used, uh, tile.
So when they put it in, it was probably straight?
And it could've moved throughout the years, because when that, when, like I said, when that pump goes off, it has force, so when it's blowing into that, uh, tile, it's probably, you know, pushing and moving it up and down, moving it all over the place. Ground moves if one freezes and thaws, you know, there's a lot of issues, so it, it.
So it's not a solid piece though? Uh, it's not a solid piece though?
It's, which one, it's a perforated pipe. It's got holes in it, it's like a field tile in a park. It's not a solid piece that keeps everything else out. So it, it, it should be running straight, but like I said, it's, it's roly poly and curvy, and that's why we couldn't get the jet down, that's why we assumed it was a hard plug, and it wasn't.
So ultimately, the entire issue was, the problem or not?
Correct, our line was totally fine.
Well, how many houses out there have this need and rule?
We went through and cleaned the whole thing, that's the only part that was plugged. Everything else, we haven't heard of any other issues, no one's came, she's the only one that's came to us with an issue. But we are gonna keep an eye, make sure it's clean. So, and like Gary said, I was gonna have a conversation when she got back out of town and just talk about the whole thing, thing, and sort of made, I don't know, it'll be on the next agenda, then I'll try to work with them.
Be two weeks, two, uh, two weeks, uh, that's me, December, so she wants to come back in.
So she would like this delayed until?
She wants to come talk to the whole council.
And she is, her tap is back in to put that?
Yeah, she, she said that today, that they.
So that's December seventeen?
Thanks.
So December seventeen, that's?
Yes, that's what she likes to say. Okay, uh, second item, uh, review of tabulation for building remittance services. At the last, uh, utility committee meeting, uh, we had, uh, bids given to us, uh, from two different companies. There was a motion and a recommendation by the utility committee to move forward with the contract with CDS for utility billing services. And, uh, that would be the recommendation to the council. I had asked if possibly a representative from, uh, CDS could be here tonight to answer any questions, if, if we had any questions. There was a substantial difference in the two contracts. Uh, CDS had a very good price, very competitive, being local, uh, we felt it would be very good, uh, you know, we can go right out and talk with them, or they can come right in here. Uh, there were several other things, and Andrea and Rhonda, maybe you can enlighten us a little bit more, because I can't remember it all, but they kept things for a lot longer period of time, receipts too, five years, I believe, was that right?
Actually, I think two was it, Andrea? Yeah, we're required, yeah, we're required to comply, and I think they're, they were willing to do, um, extend it. Where the other company, actually, I think, give us any copies of the stuff, we won't have that, and they only have this for two months.
Does any one have any question?
Yeah, Rhonda.
Rhonda, that's.
Do you have a separate department out there that does this sort of thing?
Uh, no, it would be done by the same people that process our, our magazine mail as well. We can use the same equipment.
And I can say I've worked there, and their machinery is awesome, that scanning ability they have is awesome.
Thanks, John.
They, uh, they invited us out, uh, Rhonda Clayton, utility building supervisor, Andrea, and I went out there, and they stepped us through the full process from beginning to end, uh, of how our payments would be processed through that system, and it is quite impressive. And it shows why they have this estimated cost, um, with their competitors' numbers here, that they certainly have it down to an exact science, which is a low run just like everyone. And having, it'd be, I mean, this is truly a national service, but to have them right here within our community is a great opportunity.
Any further questions? Our department for CDS?
And we're looking for, uh, action by council, uh, direct staff to pursue our contract, uh, but then we would bring back to a future council meeting for a plan action.
So who, sir? Call the room.
Now?
Yes.
Tex?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Dexter?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westing?
Yes.
The last item I had that wasn't on your list in regards to rolling meadows. We have, uh, plenty of, you know, like, with rolling meadows, but the issue of, uh, the repairs on this, on anything that goes on out there, uh, they had requested that the city be a, uh, person, resupply a person to watch the repairs, to make sure that the repairs are done properly enough to our standards and our codes. And, uh, after some lengthy discussion and checking into the legalities of it, it's the recommendation of utility committee to go ahead and move forward with that, and to work with rolling meadows in regards to a payment schedule, as to what its cost will be when we send someone out to observe. So I'd make that in form of a motion to, uh, move forward with that.
Sir? Call the room.
Do I repeat my word?
No. Motion was, uh, with the city to, uh, supply a class three, uh, grade three.
No, not by update.
Not by update, it's grade three, water distribution, water distribution, there we go. To observe and watch over any repairs slash changes that are made in the water on distribution systems and rolling meadows, at a reimbursed cost by rolling meadows.
Do they have a lot of those out there? Do we know, is, this is just a?
No, they don't have a lot, it's just a, yeah, it's actually a good thing for us, because it's really a continuation of our system. And so, and, and they do have a good system, but it's just a case that they want it done, and it's probably in our best interest to make sure that things are fixed properly and handled right now. Does that make sense, Andrew?
Tex?
Yes.
Pickla?
Yes.
Dexter?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westing?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up, economic development committee, Steve Ray.
Yes, we, uh, we got a meeting this evening in the auditorium, uh, with, uh, county and industrial park partners and other representatives, elected representatives discussing some of these issues that you see, um, on the agenda. And we're gonna start out with Luke, because on number one, uh, he's done a pretty good job of looking at that bad news, so he might as well, uh, go to Gary tonight.
Council, you may have saw that I poured on an email, uh, that identified a stop work order on any of the work for industrial park road. As you recall, we received some federal appropriations for the overpass project. Uh, just recently, we were from a curve ball, uh, explaining that because the industrial park road project does not fit in the very specific, uh, language that was containing appropriations bill, saying for the overpass structure, where those appropriations could be spent. We were identified that we could not use any of those federal appropriations for the industrial park road project. Uh, that project is about three quarters of a million dollars. The reason that we had entered into that is that we felt that that would be a good first phase of that overpass project. Without going through all the details, uh, of that decision, uh, we spoke with the economic development committee at length, and, uh, the economic development committee poured on a recommendation that because there is, uh, some felt responsibility of the city to move forward on the project, uh, they directed staff to come up with a couple of different financing options, uh, for both a portion of that industrial park, uh, industrial park improvement, as well as the full eighteen to nineteen hundred feet of improvements. And so staff will be doing some research on what those cost, uh, what that would look like, and what that would mean for our budget. And there was a, a lot of detail, I'm not sure, from, uh, the other members, uh, that are also attended, uh, but from the other members of the economic development committee, I'll give you additional items to add.
Of course, just that we felt it was kind of important that we at least put some of the options, even if we have to go with about a federal authority, because that is a significant group that needs to be done out there on the industrial park road.
It's not gonna get you together.
It's not gonna get you together, and we have to, and, and the other part of it is, we're showing as a city that we're willing to step up and, and do that, it, it could, it could help when we ask for further appropriations for that overpass project, if it's possible. But I, I think we need to, we need to show a good faith that further must do mean something. Once Luke gets those numbers, we'll, we'll be coming back and discussing it, this is more than likely, because this is something that I think the entire council needs to involve in the process.
Would you like, uh, when we bring that back, I realize this started at the economic development committee, uh, would you like us to bring it back to the economic development, development committee, or bring it back to the whole council?
Well, I guess I'll refer to, to Greg and, and Gary here, but I guess I'm having the thinking that this is probably something to do, just bring back from this council meeting, this discussion, the whole, and the whole.
Absolutely, that's fine.
But just one last second on that, uh, and we brought up numerous times at our economic development meeting, this was completely out of left field of what we had been told for years by the state DOT. When Darryl was here, he was told the same thing, and he passed it on to everyone, all the parties involved, but Luke said that they found some emails from the DOT stating specifically that we were okay, as long as it was within the project parameters of our engineering, so we could use it for mainly, we could use it for industrial park, we could use it for the bridge and green separation. So this was very bad news.
So this is federal, but focused, it couldn't be, it's not in state.
Okay, very good, um, item two, discussion of the overpass project, meeting that I also delved into that, uh, we discussed at length, obviously, over the years, we've wrangled with the idea, is, is this where we want the overpass? I think we had a good discussion on that, and other items that we've looked at, and other locations, just necessarily, wouldn't be conducive or wouldn't be an any more costing of the land. So that's, uh, one of the things that was discussed, and as far as appropriation, um, we obviously know that that's the entire by the day. One of the other things too, and Luke, why don't you touch on the, uh, the information that you've come across about the ten, ten year, but that's pretty critical.
Yes, during our meeting, uh, we were invited, actually, we asked for a meeting with the DOT and the Federal Highway Administration last week. Uh, myself, Scott Sweet, uh, attended that, also Wayne Schwartz, our engineer was there, uh, a few representatives from the county also. What we heard from them, of course, was the bad news about not being able to use any of the appropriations for industrial park road. During those discussions, they also made us aware of what they described as the ten-year rule. And that's, if you start a project of which you use federal appropriations, you have a ten-year timeframe to either complete that project or be responsible for potential repayment of what has been spent. So in other words, if today, the city were to move forward with spending, let's say, appropriations on, um, building part of the abutments for the overpass. And by two thousand nineteen, that would be ten years from when we first funded those funds, we could find ourselves potentially liable to repay the DOT, ultimately repay the federal government for any of those funds that had been spent. I contacted one of our local delegations, and they were, they weren't as familiar with that ten-year rule. I think of speaking with Chairman Ray of the economic development committee, he had mentioned that, uh, certainly putting some stock and faith in that staff, uh, person with the Federal Highway Administration, understanding the specific details of those rules, and, uh, for the time being, that's what we should probably depend on the facts. So there's just some fear that as we move forward with the overpass project, it has the direction council continues to pursue, that we may find ourselves in a situation, uh, in two thousand nineteen, if we have expended funds for that completed project, there's potential for repayment. There's a qualifier there, that if you purchase right away, uh, that could extend out an additional, uh, ten years for a total of a twenty-year timeframe of when that project would have to be completed.
So the thing that we fear the most is that, uh, which is, there's been support passed from this body to continue forward with a project like this, if we don't get some significant funding soon, then we run the risk of, you know, council's down the road, and the taxpayers can just wrap the pain back, things that didn't affect any of us this week. So one thing that we, we discussed over there is, uh, should we put this project in totality together in, in terms of grants, rise, and what other options are available, and then just put it out there as one appropriation request to Washington, that this is what we need, you know, like fourteen day, you know, project, this is what we need, uh, and, and see where it goes from there. If we can get it all in one fell swoop and move forward with it, then we'd probably be in a lot better shape. But as long as we continue to reach out more for money and piecemeal over time, we're gonna have this risk, and that's, that's the scary part. It was kind of, it was the consensus of the, of the committee to probably look at that route of putting it all together and just give it as an appropriation request, saying, here's what we need, if we can get it, the project goes forward. But as a council as a whole, we're gonna have to come to a point where we're gonna have to decide, if we don't have that money, you know, do we, do we continue or stop, without any certain piece, like, and so, that's kind of where we're at.
The, making that, that substantial ask, uh, packaging that with rise fund at the same time, going through that full process, understanding that in the, uh, in the past, we had used Russ Reed for a number of years, which they helped us achieve a substantial amount of dollars for those senators who were handling that's project. We would likely need some type of assistance like that, uh, for grant writing and organization, because we certainly do not have the expertise in house. So realizing that with a move forward of that one substantial ask, there would likely be some expenditure that would go along with that. So the council's saying, yes, that's what we want to do, realize that we would have to find someplace in the budget that can fund that, um, that administration ground.
But on that note, we also, we, we also discussed in the meeting next door that we'd send a delegation to Canada to test the climate first, before we expended any money on another, uh, DC administration effort. So that way we weren't spending money before knowing exactly what the climate was out there, because there's no point spending another contract out there, we don't know if it's not going to do us any good. So it's test the waters, if you want to send somebody out there to talk to.
That's critical, we need to do that, we need to have our plan in place, and then simply go past for the time being, see what goes in there, so it's a good idea for that. Now, for the council's sake, Gary, I want to draw everybody who's on your mind, that not only would be overpass to help with our industrial park partners and to, and all that, but remember, we talked about for quite a long time, that extension north from industrial park. It would open up that area of the gravoph property and that spur line, and future economic development opportunities up in there, and that, that also plays into this. So if we're really interested as a body to move forward, we have to, there's a lot of other things that are coming together for this, that are important to us, the city, and so, um, if this is how we want to move forward, we have to keep track of these causes of those things too. And just, just as well as making sure that industrial park road gets repaired and fixed, because, um, some of the partners out there, particularly Fairway, and some of those other moving trades that have these big trucks, and they have these roads in good shape. So it all plays together, so.
It's not really essential to have great separation to, uh, get to the gravel property?
It's not, but it's part of our future discussions for is what that would open up, as we were building on additional, uh, roads and stuff relating to the work.
How successful was Russ Reed in the pass?
They received, uh, they, we achieved a million dollar appropriation for the overpass, and we also helped us achieve around three hundred thousand dollars, and later we staggered for a societal support. So about one point three million dollars.
So would you, uh, would tonight be a good night at least to have some kind of a plan, any, uh, decisions for council, directing you to move forward?
Yes, because I'm gonna have to, I will do some research on, on a number of different items and moving forward, so at, at least if I could gain a temperature of counsel from where you're at, uh, just in general, for support of pursuing the overpass at this location.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue with the proposed location and for funding purposes, to authorize Luke to, um, look at these different strategies, uh, as we move forward, and in addition to that, creating this, uh, overall plan, or develop a, a, a funding request, uh, getting prepared for. Going to Washington in January, and, uh, then coming back with those options to council. Put that on there.
I think I got most of it, if you want my opinion to be good.
Thank you for coming, it's fun. You're so good, I really love you.
Have a brief interview.
Yeah, why don't you tell me what you have?
Ray, we have to continue with proposal patient, direct nothing kind of a funding source.
Yeah, funding, let's do it, strategies, funding strategies, um, in preparation of, uh, us going to Washington in January to get a deal, and also incorporate it into a plan, so we know where we're going and not have him come back to us.
Can you think that for a little shorter?
Let's just stop at a strategy. All right, that's my move.
Call the room.
Pickla?
Yes.
Dexter?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westing?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Tex? Ed?
Yes.
That's it.
One thing I'd like to bring up on discussion we had at economic development was regarding what funding we've already allocated of our appropriation and spend. I would like to see exactly what we had spent and what we're liable for on that countdown for that ten years. So we know exactly what we're looking at down the road. And then also to make sure in the future, in the operation, if we do get, we can get that into the plan. So we can start figuring out what future councils are going to be looking at.
I'm proud of that. It's probably engineer people.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, building official, Lennigan.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the agenda, we have a request in Zoney, sort of parcels of property, request for bigger made to put in golf course. It's a parcel of three point one acres out on By My Own Drive, outside By My Own Drive. But over here, about three point one acres, that's home by Cedar Point and then two actual properties on Southland that are part of that subdivision on Southland that is where the request is being made. Letters went out to adjoining property owners. There was no comment for or against. It was published in the paper for the request to By My Own Zone and staff and planning Zoney has recommended approval of the request.
Can they still build those something?
Yes. They'd have to meet in this area you're talking about, Jerry.
We're changing the zoning for two.
From R three to C one.
C one.
Right.
Somebody that can build to R three there?
I'm sorry.
Is it all going to be C one? You can't build houses there?
No, just, just, well, just in that area, just requesting on zoning, yeah. They would have to meet the C one zoning classifications, right?
So, please.
Second.
Call it all.
Maystrom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Rusty? Ed? Allen?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes. I made a request to set public hearing for December third.
So, please. Second. Call it all.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Rusty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Pickler?
Yes.
Maystrom?
This side is more of an FYI, I guess. Giving the rebuilding process begun, they have an event technically scheduled for November twenty ninth. In my years, my expertise, I guess you could call it, I just don't see them being ready by November twenty ninth. I fear that they're going to ask for occupancy and I'm probably going to deny that they're not ready, especially with life safety issues. So I'm going to be in another council meeting before that. So I just want council to be aware and if you've got feedback, I'd be glad to hear it. If you want to handle it a different way.
It's not right. It's not right.
Oh, I think you got the information based on that and what's your decision?
It's good. Thank you.
The, there's a request here by Big G's. They were going to cater the event that I believe was anticipated for the twenty ninth. Again, it wasn't on the agenda. They, I don't, of course, they then haven't asked for any inspections. So that really runs coinciding, coincides with that, that situation. So if there's support ahead that we don't have, then that would not be approved either.
Well, yeah, no inspections stated, so we can't put the... Anything else? Good? Yes.
Okay, next up, Library.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Finance officer, I'm good.
The corporate talk solutions agreement company come again. And they review our work comp audit for the past forty years to determine if there was any errors either for classification of the employee, the classification of, there's different classifications. There's, um, different numbers sections that we could be getting charged that they will go through and they can make sure that we're being charged correctly from our work comp carrier. They'll go back three years to determine it. If they find anything, then they get fifty percent of the refund plus whatever we save for the next current year. So twenty fourteen equals twenty fourteen, what we give for next bill. They will get our last savings plus last year's savings plus following years. But if they don't find anything, they don't charge us anything. They actually already have our contract through EMC I gave back to them. They've done some preliminary stuff and they think they can now sign up some savings.
You ever done anything?
We have not. So I'm looking, the resolution to refer people is in the consent agenda. Unless you guys want to deny that, because it doesn't matter.
But what if they find something?
Exactly. And they do all the paperwork and they submit it all. So really there's nothing other than us giving them copies of what we've already made our work comp audit. So other than if we want to file and give it to them, there really isn't much work that we can do.
I'm always saying if it sounds too good to each other, I don't know who it is. If you weren't the damn people.
It's been several times in there that if, if you've got it. But if they don't find anything, you do not pay. So the second thing we have online under me is the I'm a state chaplain for Ron, the second.
Should go to the void and get a person.
No, but January one, two years ago, I got to go to the Laserfish conference in Los Angeles. It was awesome. I went tons. And they're going to send another person to go do that. All we have to pay for is the hotel. Multiple food was included in on that. So really the city is looking at maybe a meal here, a meal there, the flight and hotel for about five days. I think it was well worth it for when I went and so I recommend that you send for our position.
Is it the same thing as the fish thing?
Yes. There's a hundred and fifty classes she just took these round to learn more about laser fish. Do you want to go around this?
Sure. Can I just say that they're the Washington number of the century?
And I will say that Laserfish, as far as our organization and what that's going to mean for us down the road, that, that software tech is critical. And it's taking paper documents like this and having them in digital format easily organized. It gives the future of what we're going to have organization with the city.
Yeah. I made a motion that we send Ron to the... L A, San Francisco. I made a motion that we send Ron to...
Second. Call it all.
Stevens?
Yes.
Rusty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes. Ed?
Yes.
Pickler?
Yes.
Maystrom?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, you look at it from here. Got me laughing.
My first is in the annual financial report. There are two copies in the agenda that we've covered up. So there's questions on that. I'd like to take them. Fifteen pages long of numbers and more numbers. That is reporting that's done by December first in regards to our finances and how we ended this year's planning. One thing that's not on mine, that's the agenda, or the resolution for that is under consent agenda. The other thing that's under consent agenda for me was the TIP certification. That has been just currently by some of the first of them.
How many man hours are we looking at right now with the TIP?
Well, this is the department report.
Right, but I mean TIP.
I haven't looked at mine recently. The last time I looked, I had twenty-eight hours myself. And I think I'm ready to start then.
I'm a second TIP report, second. I've seen the paper with their article about TIP in July. They have like many TIPs and...
Well, I can't imagine.
They have a lot of TIPS.
Thirty-two different, I think it was like thirty-seven or thirty.
You know, the one thing I would say for community like that, because of how many TIPs they have and the benefit they receive from it, they can probably justify somebody that is dedicated or probably even a team of people that are experts at it. Unfortunately for us, we have to look to people like Senator Corey, Marsha Corey, and also Oliver and Cooney to help us through some of these stuff.
You've got to be gracious. I think everybody's similar to Corey too.
City attorney, Jim. Economic Development Director, Beth. Director, Parsons, Golden Works, John Rice.
Yes, thank you. Just one little update on the park side. We are finishing up our remodel for the shelter house that fits up on the screen. We've got a new package. It was a joint effort, the council, you guys allocated five thousand dollars to us through a box of sales tax and the Bootsy Park Foundation, I think the grand total is possibly thirty thousand for the walls and all the new appliances and everything that goes into it. We will probably open it up for rental next year. It's going to be a revenue maker probably between thirty and fifty dollars a day for rental. But it's on the north side of town. They really did a good job on it. It's got a nice inside bathroom. It's got a sink, so you can see the fridge and all that stuff. It's not huge by no means, but it's, it's another option for parties, graduations and so on. The only thing I got to get Justin and Ben out there to do an occupancy capacity there. So they're going to go there and give me the, I mean, they're going to actually put in it legally. So I don't know what's that, what's that going to cost us, but I'm sure we'll work that out, yeah. But that's just definitely, so thank you for the money. Hope it'll ring soon.
That's great. Tony Superintendent, Roy.
Yeah, I'd like to give you a quick update on the water burst dam modifications. Just a reminder, the funding for this project is IDNR grants for a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, the federal fish and wildlife grant of ninety thousand dollars, and the city of Boone water reserves for ninety-four thousand dollars, totaling three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Want to thank Greg for, it was a good publication he had in the paper the other day. It's real accurate. The rock weirs will be bid at the end of the month. It was kind of funny. It took eighty-seven pages to buy rock. You don't know it's over ten thousand ton of rock. The security fence at the high service pump area has been moved clear to the east. That'll give us room to stage these rocks and maybe down the road add some camping areas way down the road. ILDNR has issued the section four oh one water quality certificate approval. The staff at Sailorville Lake has approved the project. Corps of Engineers approved the federal nationwide permit number twenty-seven saying no effect on federally threatened or endangered species are critical habitat. The muscle study is complete. The shipo is done, which is the archaeological study. Davis bacon wages will be applied. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Preservation Officer still has to give his okay. We're hoping to get that done before January. Then DNR will actually do the bidding, award the contracts. I'm hoping to get started in January, somewhere in February, try to complete by April of twenty thirteen. We have to have it done by April twenty thirteen because that's when the hibernation period of the plemmoclotus down there stops. So anyway, that's through that. Then we had it go through.
Did you make it through all those layers before that?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, thanks, Roy. Go ahead. City engineer, where's that, Mayor, do you know this?
Oh, yes, just there's a change order and... I take it. Monday, Wayne and myself announced council approved, approved the contract to do a two core, a different one core for the curb and gutter, then a core for the rows to help save the trees. Well, with the, the tight schedule getting narrow for pouring concrete, they asked to do it in one core. Wayne and myself went out there and looked and watched it, actually dug it wide enough anyhow to do it one core. They affected two trees. We are going to keep an eye on the trees, but the rest of the trees, they're not big. They're all small, so they didn't affect them, but we will keep an eye on the two trees that they do affect. But it is wide enough to do it one core. So thanks for the effort and saving the trees, but it sort of, it was only three foot on each side. When they were digging it, it was, it was sort of hard for them to stand. But I do appreciate you guys trying to save the tree. That was awesome. John, thank you.
You've had a comment since Monday. Were you working Monday?
Yeah. It was a holiday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just, it's approved, it's a credit towards the... Yes.
Call it all.
Rusty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Pickler?
Yes.
Maystrom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Okay, next up, Director of Public Safety, Phil Skerr.
Thank you, sir. A couple things on demolitions. Last week I had another conversation with Patty Galvin from Tenley Story Street on the situation with that building. As a result of that conversation, she is going to be asking some contractors to give her some estimates on what it would cost to secure that wall if tenor four continued to deteriorate. She has reiterated to me that she does not want to move the business, that she can't move the business. So that's where we are right now. I told them it would take a couple weeks for her to do that and then I gave in contact with her. So at some point, I'll give you another update on where we're at with it. Do you want to take any questions? Great. Excuse me. The next thing is on the demolitions, kind of gauging council's interest. When we know if we do a demolition and the cost of that, we do an assessment on the property taxes. And then they pay it that way. I'm interested in your thoughts on giving them a break on the price if they paid for the demolition. And this wouldn't happen all the time, but if there was a circumstance, for example, if, say we did a demolition, it costs ten thousand dollars. If they pay a certain amount of that within seventy, you know, within thirty days, then the city would give them a discount, so to speak, which ensure that money then would be put in our coffers right away that we could reuse for demolitions. Now whether that would be a twenty-five percent, very twenty, fifteen, ten, one we're working on now, there's a potential for that. So obviously before we went forward, big thing, I guess we needed to know your thoughts on that. If that's something you definitely don't want to do or you want to consider that. And the amount that it would be if we did that.
What do you assess on the taxes? Would they have been a year for it?
It can be a year if there's a hardship or whatever. We do have a, I believe we talked to Jim, we can special assess it over ten years, more than, over ten years they would pay. But this, this would give us some enticement or whatever to encourage them to pay it off right away, which ensures the money to the city right away, and we could then turn over and experiment with demolition.
These are probably going to be few and far between, I would think, the vast majority of these properties. The corporations own them and they have no assets. And so the city probably will end up owning a property, but absorbing that cost until they sell them, the big lot. But in these situations where the landowner has other assets or to where involved to pay for the demolition, then I guess the question is whether you want to give them some incentive to pay the vast majority of that upfront or stretch it over ten years or, or we don't care.
What else do you have in mind? You said it's portion of a discount. Do you have a figure in mind?
Well, actually, just to go, Jim, we came up with twenty-five. We didn't know if that'd be too much or you wanted, or you can do what you want with it, but that's what we're thinking. So it'd be on a ten thousand dollar bill, it'd be seventy-five hundred.
Pretty good, so.
And so we would give it that thirty days and then put it back in the costs.
You're saying that you would reduce it to twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's a singular pace. The city would pay twenty-five percent, the landowner would pay seventy-five percent of the cost.
And part of that, I mean, in general, we've talked about it before, that councils identify that certainly that to those neighborhoods in the community in general, to have those, to what, the structures.
Five to twenty-five percent except for... I don't think it's a big enough setting. I think on this side, I'm pretty split.
We're going to debate for a minute, aren't we? Going to come out and argue.
Right. So are you saying, like, you want a, a story street, if they decided? I'm, I'm really concerned. I think we'll have another one coming down the pike here pretty quick. By the end of winter time. I understand.
Do they have any building to pay for two sounds?
Which one do you want to talk about? Yeah. Close by? Seven street, yeah? Seven. Second. Is it three story building?
Yeah, oh, you're talking about another downtown structure.
But I think that'd be LLC. I think they're just washed their hands. But I'm gonna have to assume we need to see-
I think he's more of a, too. Yeah, in fact, I've spent, here's what we're working on right now, trying to get to this point, we just got letters from Ed today on three more properties, my goal is to get the letters out to five residential properties, and then get them to where we can demo them, and then I think that when we do that, if we put out bids for demo, now, that's my goal, is five.
I see Gary's point.
So, is to get, I think a better price.
I think that would be, I would, I'd be favor that.
Well, you mean only incentive, just, just remember that.
Sure, sure, but absolutely. These big buildings, well, twenty-five percent's a lot of money. It could be. Now, I know, typically, it's going to be owned by an LLC, where he has no assets, we're going to be stuck with it anyway, but at least a residential, protecting ourselves.
And if the money, the money that we have available right now, I mean, obviously, we can't do five residential's.
Right.
And the one that we've been working on, I mean, there just isn't the money right now to do that, but there is money to do, I believe, five residential's at a time.
But there's another, one, another building, it could be a very possibility to, to just wash their hands of it, so eventually it'll deteriorate, and that's what the city will probably be stuck with it, if you had twenty-five percent out there, in the meantime, if something did lie, I guess we, then we had to tear it down, that could be a lot of money.
Well, if I'm understanding you correctly, where you're talking about giving, if you gave the incentive to the, for the downtown business, building also, is what you're talking about?
No.
I'm not sure.
Just for residential. I'm saying we make this residential.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, that's my understanding, right.
But we're, you're talking about, you're talking about that paid seventy-five percent of the cost, within thirty days.
Yes, yes.
That's going to lend a lot of, of gold to that, if there's a potential. What if I offered maybe even just ten percent for the next debt? I mean, just something, I mean, not the full twenty-five percent, but even just ten percent, because they're still going to give a debt, I mean, they're still going to get a discount, gives them incentive to get it done now, within the thirty days.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollar demolition to do a downtown building, you're getting, they're going to give you seventy-five thousand, and the city's twenty-five thousand. That's still butter, but not the end of thing.
And we're going to have, we're each and every one, we have the council for approval, so, I mean, I think if you give us some guidance, or if you can notice, we negotiate these things, that would certainly be helpful. And you don't have to be, say, you want each and every one, and you have like, uh-
Okay, present on, other than ten four, I'm, I'm working strictly on this.
Right, is there a motion? I move we go with twenty-five percent on residential. Second.
Call roll. Yes.
Westby?
Yes.
Maystrom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Sturton?
Yes.
Westby?
Yes.
Yes.
And that would be, we put in the minutes as a twenty-five percent reduction?
Yes, yes, now, if you want a motion in regards to commercial, but I think you'll as a one at a time basis, you want something on that?
No, I think, if it ever came to that, or what it does, we'll just spray in it, and-
Ed, Jim?
I wanted to specify, it was too late, President, I was saying, before you go, and I just might specify, single family residential, residential could be a three story apartment building, it's classified residential building.
Yeah, I figure, right.
I think you said it today.
Yeah, so, I think you got that in, did you?
Are you satisfied that just reflected that way in the net?
Yes.
That's how you, that's how I turned it, that's what we're dealing with. Thanks.
Is it commercial or moldy, family, personal?
Single residential properties.
Is the only one we're talking about.
Right.
Twenty-five percent reduction for a single family, other than a downtown building.
Very impressive. Anything else here?
Yes, in your packets, sorry, in your packets, I put out minutes, it was time to put out minutes for a toy company for the City of Boone, in your package, you have the proposal that was put out, two companies submitted proposals, World Peak Investment helped to de-engage with an Elquus toy company, after review of the proposals, discussing it with the JR, and the city attorney, my recommendation is to approve Elquus toy for the next two years that begins January first.
So. Second. Call roll.
Westby?
Yes.
Westby?
Yes.
Maystrom?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Sturton?
Yes.
Westby?
Yes.
Allen?
Last thing, real quick, is, obviously, winter's coming, just for your information, if you have any questions, I know it's coming with our snow, with our snow ordinance, we have put out approximately five hundred notices on, on vehicles around town, of the snow ordinance in the northern states, and, and that is coming.
We've heard positive feedback on that as well.
Good, of that notice.
Bill, all the lines are due in the, 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 in